Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June 8, 2015 Board of Education meeting. Please rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is always one of the more interesting and more exciting meetings of our board year because we take the time to recognize among the many contributors to the district, the many people that have achieved at a really unprecedented level, a few of the people and who have really have done so much to make sure that the educational experience here in Guilford is so positive and some of the students who have achieved at really tremendous unprecedented levels. So with the board's permission, I'd like to amend the order of agenda unless you all want to sit here and as we go over the minutes and the checks and the rest of it, my guess is no. So absent objection, I think we will go to the superintendent's, no, I'm sorry, the student representatives, let's please go to item seven. Two of our representatives are leaving us this year. Mr. Messeny or Dr. Freeman, are you going to introduce?
Mr. Blas, I'm going to hand this whole series of recognitions over to Mr. Messenty this evening.
Okay.
Catherine and Joe, just stand up here for a minute. We'll start out with our Board of Ed reps.
I'll come on this side right here.
I have some recognition for Catherine. Thank you so much for your valuable insight and guidance that you provided to us over these past months. I hope that you've enjoyed your experience serving as the student rep on the board as much as we've enjoyed your participation. Thank you very much, best of luck in the future.
Joseph, I want to thank you for your guidance and your good humor throughout the year. Good luck in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Catherine will be attending Fairfield, Joe's going south to Virginia, University of Virginia, and both are going to make tremendous contributions to their college campus life. Two fine young people and I'm so proud of both of them. They've done a great job all year and throughout their tenure here.
If I could just say, Mr. Messeny, on behalf of the board, I want to thank them on behalf of really the entire board. They have contributed at every meeting, they have offered guidance and opinions on issues that we, that are important and we think it's important to have a student voice at these meetings. We take it seriously. We're sorry that we couldn't get the start times fixed this, in time for you to be here, but we are deeply grateful, and I think I speak on behalf of the entire board, we're deeply grateful. We know, we know the amount of time that you've put in because kind of we were here. But you've got lots of other things that are pulling at your time and hopefully you've gained some experience that you'll be able to use moving forward, but we know that we have gained some valuable insight and we're deeply grateful and want to thank you on behalf of the entire board.
And Mr. Blas, if I could add, I want to thank all four of the reps, but particularly Joe and Catherine. It is not unusual for student reps to a Board of Education to only speak from their individual singular perspective as high school students. The reps in Guilford over the last two years and particularly this year have gone out of their way to speak for all of the students in Guilford Public Schools. The reports and the information that you have brought from the middle school and elementary levels as well as the high school have been really helpful and really very much appreciated. So thank you for everything that you've done at this board this year.
They look great at the senior prom Friday night, too. Let's know that, too. Cole Horton, are you here? Can you come forward, please? I'd like to introduce our Governor Scholar. They're far and few between, we've had several actually over the last eight years, but it's really, it's tough to come by for a high school, for a learning community. But each year, the governor recognizes the top thirty juniors in the state of Connecticut. They look at the strength of schedule, they look at grades as well, SAT scores or ACT scores. There's an essay that has to be written and also part, as part of the application form from our school counseling department. And recently, he was honored at the AquaTurf with twenty-nine other juniors from around the state. And I was there and I have to tell you, I had some buttons popping off my shirt to sit there with this young man with the talent, the academic talent that was in that room was tremendous and he's got nothing but great things ahead of him. So Cole Horton, congratulations, Governor Scholar.
On behalf of the board, I want to thank you and recognize your achievement. This is, this is, there are lots of things that'll happen that are accidents and things that maybe just are happenstance. This is not one of them. This is a result of your commitment, your hard work, your diligence. Mr. Messeny talks, says great things about the way you applied yourself over your course of time here. My guess is that he did that before he got to the high school, but we're very proud of you as a community and please let, accept my thanks and our good wishes moving forward and we hope to see much more of you next year.
Thank you very much.
Sean Hackett, come on up here. You know, Sean's going to be involved in actually a couple more presentations tonight, but I want to just recognize him. Recently, I nominated him to be a member of the State Board of Education student, as a student rep. And he made it to the final interview round. He was not selected, omission of good judgment, that's all I can say. But he was selected. One of nineteen students, they appointed him to the State Student Advisory Council on Education. He'll meet with the governor now, once a month, to discuss school and discuss things that are happening, not just at this school, but statewide. So congratulations, we've never had someone on this committee or represent our school in such a fashion. He's only a junior, so we have him back for another year. And again, congratulations, very proud of you. And while he's standing here, he's going to kind of help me get through the next couple presentations. He was intimately involved in our Physics Olympiad, he's intimately involved with the robotics team that has turned out in numbers tonight and wait till you see them perform, it's incredible. But for our physics, I'm also going to ask Mrs. Roginsky to please join Sean here, please. Mrs. Roginsky teaches physics here at our school. She's been selected Teacher of the Year a couple times in science for the state of Connecticut. A wonderful teacher, a mentor for students, the kids love her and she does a great job. I remember my second year here, I think it was, she called me down to a room and they were doing some experiments and they had a bed of nails and she wanted me to lay on this bed of nails and I just refused. And immediately, I turned and left. I didn't know what I was getting into, but it was just an experiment that she was doing with the kids and well, I'm a student, so you know. So this year, a number of our students participated in the Olympics, the Physics Olympics. We came in number two in the country. Sean did, I'm sorry. Sean scored number two in the country and in our division and we were so, so very proud of the team. And I'm apologizing, right now, I'm thinking of the bed of nails, so forgive me, because I'd really mess that up. But our physics team ended up second in the country of their total score in Division One. Five, the top five teams, four were from California and then of course, little old Guilford, number two in the country. And then we had three students score in the top five and Sean was number three. Corey Lynch was number three, Sean was number five in the country in Division One in physics, which is tremendous. And a lot has to do with Ms. Roginsky. I mean, she does a great job in the classroom and the kids really respond to how she teaches and she really blends humor in with rigor and instruction and we're real proud of that. Giuseppe Pantolo, I don't know if Giuseppe's here tonight. Giuseppe ended up third in the region, but Corey Lynch and Sean, you're going to meet Corey soon because I'm going to really have Ms. Roginsky call him up. Is Corey, Corey here? All right, so come on up if you participated in the physics, because I'm going to let Ms. Roginsky and Sean really talk about it. Corey Lynch is who ended up number three in the, come on over here, Corey. Number three in the nation in Division One in his physics score, which is incredible. And of course, Sean was number five, Giuseppe's not here this evening, but he was number three in the regions. Just a real strong showing from a small town and, but a powerful school like Guilford High School. So with that, Sean, I'm going to kind of turn it over to you and Ms. Roginsky if you'll talk about the competition and talk about your students.
It actually was called Physics Bowl and ten students participated and they pick five highest scores and compared to the highest scores of all the other schools. And that's first time I'm doing it every year, but first time we were second in the country. And we were kind of lucky because this year, China was a separate entity. Usually they counted together. And I must say, it's an honor and a privilege to teach students such as I teach and I expect them to do great things in life. And if they don't respond to me, I can always throw them on the bed of nails.
So your secret is the bed of nails, it's now out.
Well, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to present this certificate of recognition to the Guilford High School physics team, the advisors and the students in recognition of playing second in Division One competition at the National Physics Bowl. And for me personally, I've known Sean Hackett since he was about that size, because I was his pediatrician when he was growing up and it's nice to see how well you've done as well as your colleagues and friends. Congratulations, guys.
This is our valedictorian right here, Henry Robinson, just want to let you know that, too.
Excellent.
And our robotics team. I don't know what I can say about them. It's a wonderful annual trek that I take up to Hartford to watch them perform every year. They won the, they won the state championship, the CIAC state-sponsored championship for robotics. They came in fourth in New England. They qualify for the world championships in St. Louis. They went out to St. Louis, they ended up fourth in the nation or might be the world in their division. You're going to hear more about it from these guys behind me, but you know, again, to have our student body represent this community, this high school at that level is just a very, very powerful reminder of all the good things that happened in the classrooms with both teachers and students in this town. So with that, Sean, I'm going to let you kind of talk about some of your mentors, powerful community leaders who have taken time away from their families to mentor our students with the robot and all they do for the whole year. I do want to use this public forum to thank each of them. We don't say thank you enough or often enough, but for all our adults that mentored our robotics students, thank you so much, we really appreciate it. Guys, come on over here.
All right, so first, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for inviting Apple Pie down here to talk about our program. So this year was undoubtedly our team's most successful season in its nine-year history. So we started off this January where we were told this year's game. And from this time, each team is given six weeks to design and build a robot that can compete, that can complete the engineering challenges of this game. So with six weeks is not a lot of time, so being able to design and build a robot is no small task, but we can accomplish this through teamwork and dedication. So eventually, we managed to build a robot and we started our competition season at Waterbury District Event where we seeded eighth and made it to the semifinals, which was a solid start to the season. But our work on a robot was far from done as the competition season is a time for continuous improvement. So at every event, we strive to reiterate the designs of our components, making ourselves more effective, more robust and more reliable. So over the course of the season, we saw this really pay off. Our next district event, we ranked seventh and again, made it to the semifinals. At our third district event, we ranked second and made it to the finals. And then, a few weeks later, we qualified for the regional level where we attended the New England District Championship. And in addition to winning that event, we were also awarded the Engineering Inspiration Award, which celebrates a team's outstanding success in inspiring engineering in the community. So with that, we qualified for the World Championship level in St. Louis. So there, we ranked fourth out of seventy-six teams on this international level. We made it to the semifinals, which is a feat that's never been accomplished by Apple Pie. And it was ultimately our persistence to continued improvement and refinement that allowed us to elevate ourselves to these new heights. And by making ourselves faster and stronger at every competition, by realizing our flaws and mistakes and learning from them, and by having the continued unwavering support from all of our students and mentors, we were able to increase our average contribution to a match from twenty points at our first event to over eighty points at the World Championship level. That's a four times increase over the course of the season in our performance. And with that World Championships performance, our season was far from over. So a few weeks later, we attended the CIAC Connecticut State Championship. So there, we won the event as the captain of our alliance. And then the following weekend, we went to another event called Battle Cry at WPI, which is a pretty large event with sixty teams. Success there is not an easy task, but Apple Pie managed to win that as well. So overall, with three event wins, being a finalist at another, being a semifinalist at the international level, we can be pretty proud of this successful season. And as we strive to learn from these experiences, we hope to grow not only in a competitive manner, but hope to expand and grow in our team in general.
Apple Pie currently supports itself through individual donations at our car washes and cruise lines and through the generosity of our sponsors who rank from national corporations such as AT&amp;T, UTC, and Rockwell Automation to local sponsors such as Maroso Performance Products, Pages Hardware, and of course, our founding sponsor, Bishop's Orchards. Overall, Apple Pie supports the education of ninety-four students through our program from grades four to twelve. Thirty-eight of our students are in our first LEGO League program targeted at grades four to eight, in which students learn basic engineering principles by programming, building, and competing with a LEGO robot. Fifty-six of our students are on our FRC team. Not only does this team serve as the administrative center for our other program, team members are taught advanced engineering skills by working side by side with professional engineers to design, build, program two one-hundred-twenty to one-hundred-forty-pound robots within a six-week period, as well as learning business and administrative skills through the organization of outreach and fundraising events throughout the year. Significant feature of Apple Pie is that despite the fact that we are a highly competitive team, we do not hold tryouts. We are determined to never turn a student away. This has become a pressing concern for us as we have nearly doubled in size from twenty-nine students in 2013 to fifty-six students this past year. Last year, we outdrew our shop space and we had to assign students to shifts in order to maximize the experience of each individual student. Recently, we lost an award-winning mentor who not only gave up his time and experience to each of our students, he donated his garage as our shop space. A shop space that for many Apple Pie students served not only as a place where we could build robots, it served as a home away from home. In our hunt for our new home, we are currently working with town officials as well as searching independently. It's been difficult to come up with the perfect fit with factors such as size, cost, location weighing in, but we are currently exploring different avenues. Our program has become important to our sponsoring companies, to the Guilford community, and most importantly, it has become essential to the lives of ninety-four different students in our community. I'd like to stress the growing importance of programs such as ours and the overall importance of STEM education in our community, not only to the students in this room, but to every student that the board represents. The growth of our team is in great part to our continued outreach efforts, which have culminated this season.
So at the core of First Robotics is a responsibility to further an interest in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Within our own team, we provide students with access to professional software as well as the skills necessary to utilize it effectively. Each fall, multiple mentors donate their time to teach courses, thorough courses in LabVIEW and SolidWorks programs which they use daily, which they use daily in their respective professions. Through experiences in these courses, students in the team have been able to acquire internships in physics laboratories at Yale or employment at Core Informatics in Branford. I've been able to use my proficiency in SolidWorks acquired through the robotics team and apply it towards my final project and utilize the 3D printers that the high school currently has. We're also able to extend our programs beyond the members of our team. Throughout the year, we hold a number of workshops which seek to expand upon and supplement that which younger students learn in the classroom. This past Wednesday, we hosted a workshop at the public library where we taught forty-five middle school students to program miniature robots. The previous Wednesday, we were at Melissa Jones where we gave a robot demonstration to sixty students and talked to them about the functionality of this year's robot. We recently held a presentation for the Shoreline Outdoor Education Center where the Apple Pie students actually worked with a group of elementary school students to build marshmallow catapults and to teach them fundamental programming skills. Apple Pie hosts a number of events like this throughout the year and one group in particular we strive to engage is a female demographic, which is severely underrepresented in the engineering field. So recently, we held a Women in Science Forum, which was presented by two technical mentors and a Guilford High School alumnus currently employed at the NASA Jet Propulsion Laboratory. And acts like these align with other efforts such as robot demonstrations to the Guilford Girl Scouts. This past April, as Corey mentioned previously, we were awarded with the Engineering Inspiration Award, which is highly prestigious and we think that this accolade validates the efficacy of all of our outreach efforts in the community. And as a token of appreciation for the support that Guilford High School has provided us as well as the Board of Education and all the members of the community, we'd like to present to Mr. Messenty our plaque from the CIAC State Championship Robotics Competition.
That's going to look really good in the new schoolroom.
And if time permits, we have a short robot demonstration.
Please. I think we're up for that.
Whitney Senior on the team will basically describe the game this year and lead into the robot demonstration.
This year's game, Recycle Garage mimics an industrial setting that has countless applications throughout the modern world, from FedEx's sorting delivery system to Amazon's own warehouse robots. To earn points in this game, our team alongside two others in our alliance worked together to make stacks of toads, topping them with recycling bins to triple the points earned per stack. Additional points can be earned through the implementation of pool noodles in the form of either placing them in the recycling bins on top of stacks or by throwing them across the field to our opponent's side, in which we were the first in the world. While there are multiple methods that points can be earned and thousands of unique robots built to accomplish these tasks, Apple Pie is proud to present our robot, Sir Stacks a Lot.
You have to see this in competition. Every year, they go to Hartford and that's a short trek for everybody, but to see all the teams on the court competing and the points that are scored and the, just the thousands of people that are there, I'm just so proud of everybody and thank you for representing our community as well as you do. It's beautiful.
Beautiful.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of the board, I want to recognize also your accomplishments. You know, this is really, lots of great things are happening in Guilford, but you know, it's, and I know there are lots of programs where the community works with the schools and students and businesses and teachers all together, but you know, is there a better example than this? This is such an outstanding example of what a community in a school and students and parents can do when they partner and when they work toward a common goal. So this is tremendously exciting. I think that this is really just, really inspirational to all of us and so I know that you're doing this to further your own education and further your own experience and hopefully lay the groundwork to an exciting future, but you know, you do inspire us, too. And it's great, I know that winning isn't everything, but you know what, it's kind of nice. And so if they keep in score, you might as well have more points than the other guy. Congratulations to all of you and we want to wish you all the best moving forward and recognize this great level of achievement, so thank you.
You know, if you noticed, none of the adults with robotics with Apple Pie spoke tonight and that's what they do. It adds new meaning to self-management of learning, Dr. Keen, because they, they do it all themselves. They make mistakes, they correct their own mistakes. I couldn't be prouder of this group of adults who really, really just opened a whole new world to our students by sponsoring this. So again, behalf of the entire school and our community, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Why don't we take a couple of minute recess and let the, let the robot roll out? All right, we're back after a short recess. I think in the interest of kind of trying to help get people out who are here, why don't we go to seven point, seven, item seven, which is the student representatives' report now, and so why don't you do that and then you can go and prepare for whatever it is you're preparing for.
Okay, so here at the high school, obviously, the school year is winding down. We have our last week of school and then next week is our finals and then graduation Friday. So the senior class has had a lot of senior activities. We just had our senior prom, that was XXX, and actually, all three of us were there, sorry, Greg. But it was a lot of fun. And then we also had our senior breakfast that week as well and it was, went very great. Then we had our Holiday Hill, the senior slideshow, but also with the high school. Here, the tennis team actually made it to the state championship and we had a junior, Evan Powell, who I believe was undefeated for the entire season and he won states.
Yeah, in singles.
And singles. So that's something to be very proud about. And also, the girls tennis team made it for the first time ever in the state champ, the states, actually on prom day, but they sadly did not win. Also, the lacrosse team, both boys and girls, had advanced in the SECs and in the states, but sadly, in the quarterfinals, they both, both lost. And then we also, over the past two weeks, we've had underclassmen awards and then we also had senior awards and then we also had scholarship night. And there was about over a hundred thousand dollars that was given out at night to students in the high school. And we also had senior sports awards. Then, a big thing is that there was a chorus orchestra and band concert in the last two weeks and those were the last concerts here in the high school and in the auditorium. And we also want to just announce that the majority of the senior class will be attending post-secondary schools.
At Guilford Lakes, the green team who visited us earlier this year, twenty-five of them, students and parents, worked hard after school one day to sort and prepare the recycling collections from the year for shipping. The juice pouches, snack bar wrappers, printer ink cartridges, and glue sticks will be shipped to TerraCycle to earn money for Guilford Lakes. And in other news, which is very big news at Guilford Lakes, the Guilford Lakes is among the one hundred best elementary schools in the state, which is according to Niche, which is the, it's a website that did all the rating. And according to Niche, a high ranking indicates that students are happy with their experiences in all aspects, especially academics, teachers, and diversity. The school is an exceptional academic institution in terms of teachers, students, resources for learning, and student outcomes. And the school is made up of a diverse population and fosters an accepting, positive school culture. So Lakes received an A for its academic grade, an A for overall experience, and an A for its teachers, which is just absolutely incredible and I think it's something to be very, very proud of for our school system.
So at Calvin Leet, they've been having author visits, I guess, and so the recent one included a UConn geology professor, Robert Thorson, who shared his book Stonewall Secrets with third grade students and fourth graders, Skyped with the author Sarah Weeks, who shared information about the writing process. Second grade classes traveled to the Lyman Center on the campus of Southern Connecticut State University to enjoy seeing some of the Junie B. Jones books performed live. Fourth grader celebrated early Guilford Day on May nineteenth and the students dressed in colonial-era outfits and participated in a number of different activities like candle making, cooking over a hearth fire, blacksmithing, and doll making. And kindergarten students and teachers welcomed family. And kindergarten students and teachers welcomed family and friends into their classrooms for an author share. The students shared their amazing writing, including books, book reviews that they created on iPads. And also, Calvin Leet participated in the Jump Rope for Heart campaign for the American Heart Association during May, and they were able to donate more than $9,000 to the cause.
And then at Wausau Jones, last Friday, they had a very successful field day, which was followed by picnic, where there was an obstacle course, some mini golf, and many assorted water and ball games. And apparently, even the parents got to have a little bit of fun during the picnic, put the kids a bit. And also going on, fourth graders are learning a lot about Greek mythology, and so they're starting to get a lot, like a lot more stories now, more understanding of the world, more culture. And then also, there's the end-of-year writing celebration going on, where even the kindergartners got into the writing fun, and were able to write persuasive essays to their parents, like one of the principal's favorites, "Why I Need a New Puppy Like Liam's." And they've been having some performances also by the theater works, such as Alexander and the horrible, terrible, no-good day for all students, which all the students enjoyed a lot. And on June 18th, there will be the fourth grade end-of-school celebration, celebrating their end of their journey at Wausau Jones.
And then, as well as Mr. Masenti has mentioned, but I will be attending Fairfield University, and I'll be studying communications, and I will, I'm planning on either minoring in psychology or social work. And I just wanted to thank you, because this is actually my second year, as you guys remember, on the Board of Ed, and I want to thank you for this opportunity. And throughout these past two years, I've actually learned what I want to do, and that is communications, and this has really helped me decide and learn what I want to do, and I'm very excited to attend Fairfield. And one of their strongest programs there is communications, and they offer many internships in New York City, so I'm looking really forward to studying that. So I want to thank you guys for this opportunity.
Great luck to you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And as Mr. Masenti said, I am going to University of Virginia.
That's the university. Terminologist.
And as of right now, I'm undecided, but leaning towards economics. And I also wanted to say just thank you very much for this opportunity to be a student representative. It was a very valuable experience. And I also wanted to say thank you for the Cabe Student Leadership Award. That's quite an honor, and so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, I guess.
Do you guys have questions?
Any questions about any of the report? All right, well, I guess we'll excuse you with our thanks and good luck to our graduating seniors, and we hope to hear from you. I'm sure we're going to hear great things, and we're grateful for everything you've done. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's try to do things where people are here, if we can, although I think we should do item four, which is public forum for topics on the board agenda. Does anybody want to address the board on something that's on the agenda? Okay. Do they get to keep their nameplates if they're seniors? Why not, right? The odds of us being using them are pretty.
Take them with you.
We expect to see you guys back, so Mark, if you don't rejoin us, we'll give it to you next year, but we're expecting. Not so fast. Everybody's getting off the board, takes two steps forward, not so quick. Thank you, everybody. You know, I see Ms. Carreri there for nine point, whatever it is, six. Why don't we, I'm sorry? Well, my thought was your, how long is the Baldwin issue?
Yeah, I mean, I think that this is, I think, this is about the textbook recommendation, and we did talk about this a fair amount at the workshop meeting two weeks ago, and this is not an adopt tonight, this is just a receive, and so we're going to have plenty of time to talk more about it next workshop meeting if we need to, but I think it makes sense to go ahead and do this.
Okay. So one of the things that you all asked was to take a look at some of the research and see what we could find that existed at this point, so that's the report that you have in front of you.
We should just introduce this. What is it, what's the textbook, what grades, what's the?
So we're looking to adopt or adopt a new edition of Connected Math, the third edition, and it's for grades six through eight. So we had a committee get together and look at, as we talked about last week, had a committee get together and look at a variety of resources, and had a much more qualitative discussion about what they wanted and why, and what were the strengths and weaknesses of various resources, and the group as a whole landed on Connected Math, and then they brought that to the entire sixth or eighth grade team, had conversations about why they were thinking that. The teachers have now had a few weeks to give me any feedback, any questions or concerns that they have about moving forward with it. So the team as a whole is in support of adopting this, and there's been, nobody has spoken up with concerns at this point. So then, looking at it at a big picture, I took some of their comments from that committee meeting and thought about how that fits in with the design that Connected Math authors had. So if you look at that first page, they have seven major themes from empirical and theoretical research literature that have been the under-pinnings for Connected Math, and the comments from the committee just fell right within each of those. So you can sort of see how that just lines up with what our teachers want and the intent of Connected Math.
Just so that everybody understands, this is in your folder.
Sorry.
This wasn't sent out earlier. This is just the reaction after the last meeting. Okay.
And then, moving to the second page, so one of the things that we would love to see are the more scientific studies that can really prove the effectiveness of any program. Connected Math Project Three is news, there's definitely very limited specific data on that, but there are a lot of studies that don't meet the clearinghouse criteria, but that are publicized. So I combed through them to sort of figure out what is the, what are the major findings? So, clumped three of the big ones together that really looked at the effect of Connected Math, either Project Two or the first edition, on just conventional state testing. And if you look at those three studies, you can see that it did not affect it, did not affect it, did not affect it, which on some levels seems like, oh, no, that, so it has no positive benefit whatsoever. But on other level, so that we're asking kids to do a lot more thinking, we know that it supports conceptual understanding, and that means that they can still do the regular stuff, just as well as a traditional textbook, but they're also adding on this additional layer. But then, that sort of is just an assumption. So then, the second chunk of studies pulled out assessments that are looking at more problem-solving type assessments, or where students are having to use adaptive reasoning skills, and looking at those three studies, they found that there is gains for students who are using Connected Math over traditional resources. There's a chart on the next page that shows some of that. You can see that it's not a huge amount of growth, the treatment group were the students who had Connected Math versus the control with the traditional, but there is greater growth using Connected Math, which then leads to the third chunk of studies, in which there was a follow-up report, it wasn't actually republished, and I wrote to the author and she got back to me with some details about the follow-up that they did, saying that there was significant growth for students who were taught by teachers who had taught Connected Math for more than one year. And then there's another study in which students who had Connected Math for three years, those scores outperformed students who had it for one or two, which makes sense that you are getting familiar with materials, students are understanding the structure, and they're deepening their understanding. So, keeping in mind as we move forward that it will be a challenge in the first year or so, but that it's going to be, as we move forward, continually benefiting our students and our teachers. Then, so that's all sort of research-driven, called around-the-country kind math specialists who took time out of their busy schedules at the end of the school year to get back to me. Nobody has a ton of data right now, they're in the exact same spot that we are without state assessment data, but there was a bit of feedback. So Stanford, Connecticut, has been using it, they've been using Connected Math Project Two, and moving to the third edition, and they are already seeing their midterm data, which they use the same assessment every year, those scores are going up with the third edition. I thought the fact that Bellingham, Washington, is actually excited to see their smarter-balance scores spoke highly of the resource. Palmoth, Maine, has been using Connected Math for a long time, since its inception, and they are always in the top five in Maine. Littleton is expecting to see growth, they've talked about also the growth into ninth grade, so it's not just on their sixth through eighth grade, but also their ninth grade scores have been going up since they've been using Connected Math. And then, Chippewa Valley, you can see they actually have a chart that shows some of the growth in comparison to national averages. And then I had just more qualitative discussions with the math specialists, and asked them the same set of questions that I asked about Bridges, and they were very, very similar conversations to what I had from Bridges, repeatedly talking about the challenge of implementation, but the benefits of doing it if you can get all teachers on board. And they were very straightforward with me about that challenge, but 100% were on board with it. You can sort of read through their comments, I don't know if you want me to go through Some of the things that they did address, we had some worries about content alignment, and they all said that's not been any pushback from their teachers. They have, it's taken, it's not till the second year that they can see where they need to really focus. So there were issues the first year with, there's just so much, but it's never way outside the bounds of what they expect they should be working on. So, second year, they're all excited to be moving forward, and they're going to share some of their pacing documents with us, so we made some good contacts.
We have a copy of the resource here tonight.
And, overall, they were just very, very positive conversations, especially in districts who are also using MathXL. It seemed to allay a lot of the fears that they, that parents and teachers had with getting students to master the skills necessary.
What is MathXL?
It's an online practice program that teachers will use for homework.
So, while Maria is still talking, I'll start passing around the materials. Remember, as I, we had talked about a couple of weeks ago, Connected Math Three is a module-based program, so there are multiple modules, six at grade eight, and I believe eight at grade six, I can't even remember the exact numbers. But, so the sixth grade will have multiple books, and each unit is in a book like this, and then there are several other titles. This one happens to be Primetime. Then, the seventh grade, I brought in the module for comparing and scaling, and then Thinking Well with Mathematical Models. So, I'm going to pass these around. Also, we talked about the Digits Homework Helper. This will be a book that kids will use for their homework. This is more around fluency, standard algorithms, so that they have additional things to practice on, and then the MathXL that is an online tool that we have, you know, access to, that you can see. But it's really for assessments, and we can send you more information about that.
Sure. So I haven't had a chance to look at the resource, I went by, but it wasn't at Lathrop House yet. We had Connected Math Two, that we had as a district but wasn't actually being used by the middle schools, and then we've heard that some of the textbook writers have, you know, put the Common Core stamp on their materials but haven't changed them that much. Is this that substantially different from Connected Math Two that, and we think we're going to actually really use it in all of the, because we weren't using Connected Math Two.
Right, so one of the reasons we were not using it was because of the alignment issues, and so that is now taken care of. And that was one of the, when asked, what, how were the materials received, that's one of the things teachers were most excited about, especially in districts who use Connected Math Two, that they were able to just use the materials without having to shuffle the books around, and that it met the rigor that they needed. So that feels, feels good. And talking to some of the districts who helped with field testing and writing of the materials, they got a draft of the Common Core standards before it was fully released, and had started rewriting and piloting those materials in some of these districts, so there's definitely substantial parts that have been rewritten.
Maria, if I were on Board of Education in X town somewhere and called you and asked how is Bridges work in Guilford, what would you say?
I think it's going great, it's amazing. I was just telling the fifth-grade teachers who are here this morning, some fifth graders were taking assessment for the advanced course placement, and we view some of the same, like, challenging problem-solving questions for the three years I've been here, and the difference in what students, how they solved those problems, and the degree to which they solved them, and the work they were showing, is, it was mind-blowing, the difference. Usually, it's just like, oh, guess they can't figure these out, and they were all really able to make sense out of the math and to show their work. It's significantly different. And that was one of the nice pieces, a lot of the districts who are using Connected Math Three are also Bridges districts, I think there's a very nice correlation there.
Thank you.
Okay, we did, this does answer some of the questions we raised at the last workshop meeting two weeks ago, and we're thankful, grateful for your doing that work. I know that's a lot of work, it is, we're tracking down.
It's very interesting.
Well, it is interesting, and you're probably going to get honest answers, I don't know any reason why somebody would.
Exactly.
But, you know, these districts are not, they're comparable, I think some of them are comparable to us anyway, and with the experience, this has been such a frustrating area, I'm sure it's been frustrating for your teachers, it's frustrating for you, I know it's been frustrating for the administration, but I guarantee you, it's been frustrating for parents, and it's been frustrating for students not to have really a clean set of resources in the middle grades. The teachers, I know from personal experience, the teachers have really done a great job trying to cobble materials together, but this, this is, if it's adopted, is intended to fill a resource hole that really needs to be filled, and I think we're frustrated that, that the book publishers don't seem to have been able to deliver a uniformly-accepted top-quality product for the amount of money that they, that they want to charge. As Dr. Moore said, a lot of these materials don't seem to be very different from the pre, the old materials, and notwithstanding the marketing end of it. So, I think the plan would be that these materials would be at the central office at Lathrop House for at least the next two weeks, that we would have it on our agenda for the workshop meeting in the end of June, and the intent is that if it's adopted, then it would be able to be available for the start of the school year, and with professional development.
They won't let us schedule it until we.
Place a purchase order.
Okay, all right, okay.
The materials are available, and they are, at this point, open and available to community members as well as Board of Education members, and they're at the, they're in the library on the first floor of Lathrop House.
I went down there today and looked at the materials. They are, there's a substantial amount of materials available. I can see what some of the, some of the problems where they were focusing on, to say that there's so much that you're going to need a lot, good professional development, so that people, instructors know how to focus and not get bogged down, so they get through all that they have to, how to together pick and choose what is the best activity to actually give out, those kinds of things. But the materials look very exciting to me, with lots of real-world kinds of questions, and they look like they will be, but again, I caution, as I always say with anything, change takes three years to happen. So, I've said this so many times, the first year, you're just going to go through it, you're looking at it, it takes three years to really implement something as substantial as this kind of change.
Another thing I'd just like to add is, we made a big investment in Connected Math One, and then we bought a few modules of Connected Math Two. Grade six has pretty consistently used the resource, the Connected Math resource. When we changed our curriculum, and some things shifted down and up, and the seventh and eighth grade, they really started trying to pull other things together to make more sense of it. And I think that one of the things that teachers made a comment about, they were very impressed, or they felt. that teachers made a comment about were, they were very impressed, or they felt that one of the things that Connected Math was missing was more of the procedural fluency and having more of that kind of algorithm homework kinds of practice. And that's why they were really pleased, and they felt like the digits in support of, you know, with the Connected Math. And then having the online tool, to have online assessments and online quizzes, and with instant feedback for kids, putting those three components together made it a much more viable and resource that they felt more comfortable with than they had in the past. So I think that, just like anything else, we have to support the teachers. We have to expect that they'll use it. We have to continue to, you know, provide professional development as well as, you know, to, to monitor its use carefully. So we want to make sure that its use is intended to use, to be used, but also that we are maintaining the cognitive rigor of the curriculum and providing the kinds of support that kids need. So it's a little bit different from our Connected, remember, we had a math specialist, and then for several years, we did not. Maria came back, came to us, and we really changed the curriculum significantly to be aligned more with the standards. And we have seen our mathematics program grow. And, you know, we focused last year on Bridges. We could not find a math resource. Even though we looked at this one last year, it wasn't aligned perfectly. And so we said, you know what, we're going to look again, and, as well as some of the other resources we looked at, and we're going to look for things other than, you know, instructional supports, not just on alignment.
Actually, Maria, one of the things this year, although we didn't land on a new resource this year, we did bring in a year-long professional development strand-
Right.
-that was contracted through IFL. We brought in Steve Miller, who was the fellow who worked with the staff all year long on instructional strategies in the classroom. As those teachers were looking at the resources, did they make connections between the work they did for a year with Steve this year and what they saw in the Connected Math materials?
Right. I think that's part of what moved them forward, of recognizing what is truly supportive in teacher materials, and seeing a lot of the same, oh, it explains this misconception that students are going to have, and gives a good teacher suggestion for what they should do.
So I do want to point out for the board that as we plan for next year, we expect to see the convergence of year two with Steve Miller, who will continue to work with those classroom teachers, year one of our new six-through-eight math area coach at the middle level. So not only will we have Steve contracted for six or eight days across the year, but we will have a full-time coach in district working with our six-through-eight teachers, and a resource that they, they now have selected because they see it fitting into their work that they've-
You may have mentioned this, but Steve Miller is-
Steve Miller is, he is a professional development fellow through the Institute for Learning. We've been working with a language art fellow for the last six or seven years. This was the first year that we brought in Steve and targeted the middle level to support there. The idea was to pair Steve from the external support with our internal coach. We just filled that internal position. But Steve actually wrapped up his year with a full day of work that he did with building-level leadership on math instruction, and it was one of the most exciting days of PD for our leadership team that I've seen in a couple of years. We came out all very excited, and in fact, while Steve targeted grades six-through-eight this year, we came out with requests from K through 12 for Steve to spend time in their schools next year as well. It was a really engaging day. So next year, there's really a convergence that's going to take place around six-through-eight math instruction. Continued work with Steve, new coaching support daily in district, and a new resource should the board approve this moving forward.
And on the, go back to the internet, the actual resource. They talk about also available in interactive, mobile, active book format. So what is the availability of, you know, these resources on electronic?
So that's also a nice piece. It's the, and it's not super interactive, because it's hard to do math, show math work, but all the books are online. Students have access to it. So a teacher can assign homework. If students have their computers, they can see the pages. Parents can see the pages, even if the books aren't going home. And they can actually write in it if a teacher's-
How do they do that? Does each student have a login or password?
Right.
Yes. And do they have any way of following what they're doing online, like?
No, yeah. So the, so the students can, can write their responses in there. I don't know if teachers will use that. I feel like that would be the extremely tech-savvy teacher-
But the electronic program doesn't, it doesn't monitor and score and control their progress like Khan Academy would?
No.
Okay. I think that would-
But Math Excel, Math Excel would-
But the complete resource would be available.
Okay.
Right. Yes. Yeah.
It follows-
Do they, as part of the review of the material, do they provide a login to do that?
It has homework. It has assessments. It'll have quizzes that teachers actually have to put in there, but we have to go through all the training.
Are you saying you want to be able to-
And I think what Chris is asking is, if he drops by Lathrop this week, can he look at the hard materials, but can he also get online to view those materials?
Yes.
Okay. So I need a login and password.
I'll put the demo account down there.
Okay. Thank you.
The other thing is that they both have schedules during the week, but when you do drop in, by all means, check to see if Anne or Maria are in their offices. I know that Maria will come down and spend time with you if she's available and has time to show you some things in the materials.
And I'd urge anybody to, you know, who has questions, to talk to either Dr. Keane or Ms. Carrery before the next meeting, so we can try to answer as many questions as we can before, before the vote. So unless there are any other questions now, I think we'd excuse-
I just, I just have an observation. In thumbing through the material, I'm delighted to see that not all of the characters are white, male shopkeepers, or students, or professionals. There are different races. There are different genders, and that's nice, because there's always another hidden message in some of these textbooks. And I'm glad to see that this is in conformity with our values.
I'd just like to add a piece, and I haven't checked with Maria before adding this, but our next workshop meeting will take place after the close of this school year. And while she's very, very welcome to be there, I'm not sure if Maria's going to be in attendance.
I'm still working that whole week. I'll-
Okay. I would still like to take this opportunity as the last meeting that Maria will attend that is televised to the community of Guilford, to point out that for the last three years, Maria has moved the math instruction in this district forward, I believe, immeasurably. Her support of classroom instruction, her help in selecting the Bridges material, her help in rolling out the Bridges materials to the classroom and the parents of the community, and now her help in moving forward middle-level instruction. We were lucky to have Maria for the time that we had her, and she will be missed tremendously by the teachers, the parents, the students, and the administration in this school district. So I want to take the opportunity just to say thank you to you for all you've done while we have you here on TV.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're up to 8.4, I think, right? The Baldwin Middle School schedule
update.
Yes. I know that Mr. Hamel is going to come to the podium, and he's going to take the balance of this. I'll just point out that when we began the search for the two principals last year, at Lee and at Baldwin, I began by hosting public forums. And at first, I spoke to the parent community, and then I met with the staff and the faculty in each of the buildings. And at Baldwin, in both of those meetings, I was asked to find a principal who would come in and be willing to look at the schedule at Baldwin Middle School. The parents at Baldwin asked to take some time to reflect on the schedule, and the staff at Baldwin asked to find somebody who would take the time to reflect on the schedule. Dr. Borland's report to us suggested that we should take some time to look at the schedule at Baldwin Middle School. I have spent much of this year lowering expectations because it is my experience that for a new principal to come in and to work with schedule changes takes time, and generally takes at least two years to, to get to know the schedule deeply, to think about what improvements would be needed, and then to marshal support and involvement and get the community and the constituents involved in making those changes. So while I have been spending time lowering expectations, Mr. Hamel has been spending time working on the schedule. He's here tonight with staff members from Baldwin Middle School to talk about their process and to talk about an actual proposed schedule change for next year that he has brought to me and that I am very, very supportive of. While the schedule is within the purview of the principal, because this ties to the Borland report, because it ties to the math instruction that we've been talking about for the last three years, because we haven't changed the schedule at Baldwin Middle School for something on 15 years, I've asked Doug and his staff to come and share all of that with you tonight, so that you can be deeply informed and have an opportunity to ask any questions before Doug and his staff and I decide to move forward with these schedule changes. And so, Mr. Hamel, it's all yours.
Well, thank you very much. First of all, thanks for the opportunity to be here. We do appreciate it. And I want to thank Paul for lowering expectations all year, because that was also appreciated. So what I show you tonight, I hope, is, is well received. I don't have a board of nails, and I don't have a robot. But what I do have is a Google presentation for you, which is displayed on the screen behind Dr. Freeman. And if you turn your attention to that, it's, there's nothing earth-shattering on there. I'm going to talk to most of the slides, but it helps keep me focused, and there are some visuals that I think are helpful. So first of all, as Dr. Freeman mentioned, you know, we talked about schedule in my initial interview, and then he shared with me the concerns of the staff and the families. And when I did my initial information gathering with the staff itself, the schedule was the number-one item that the staff brought to me in terms of something that needed to be addressed at Baldwin. So again, about halfway through this year, I called together a committee. And that committee was made up, actually, I asked for people to be on the committee. How, you know, how many people would like to be part of a scheduling committee at Baldwin? I had over 20 responses in the affirmative, which for a staff of 50-plus teachers is pretty good. I wasn't going to run a staff of, a committee of 20 teachers, though. So what we did was, we narrowed it down. I had actually six core members of the committee, two of which are sitting right here at the table. I had Pamela Dear, who is our library media teacher, Anne Lombard, who's a fifth grade math and language arts teacher, John Motinaro, who's a fifth grade social studies and language arts teacher, and I had Stacy Reed. She's a sixth grade science and language arts teacher, Jan Shames, who is a chorus and music teacher, and Courtney Sumer Barber, who's a sixth grade math and language arts teacher. So that group, together with, of course, the expertise of Phil Ross, our dean, and some of our special ed people, represented a whole lot of cross-section of Baldwin Middle School. And I put it up there on the slide, just what that represents. There's 20-something hats represented there in that committee of six. And so we came together. And we came together for a purpose. We started that process by setting the purpose. We wanted to thoughtfully and purposely consider the schedule. The schedule that has been in place at Baldwin Middle School has been in place for not 15 years, but more like 19 years. And while it's been tweaked along the way, it's not been changed in a, in a long, long time. And sometimes when you tweak a schedule, you might not take the time to look back and see what the grand impact is. So we were going to do that. We wanted to take a look at it thoughtfully and look at it within our given resources. And we wanted to make sure we had a schedule that engaged student learning and provided those opportunities as, as best we could to maximize those opportunities. So we had some constraints we had to consider. One is a school day. I mean, there's lots of great ideas out there. If you want to extend the school day, or if, you know, if you want to cut out lunch and recess for kids and that kind of thing. But we had some constraints. We took those into account. We also had contractual constraints, what the teachers could work, how many classes they could teach, how many kids could be in their class, food services, how lunch works, and so forth. Our staffing of paraprofessionals and other staff members. And then the three at the bottom are probably the ones we considered to be most important. Community expectations and values, you know, what does the Baldwin Middle School community expect from Baldwin Middle School? That was a question we wanted to ask. And also, the math instructional time. This is a great tie-in to Maria's presentation earlier. You know, we know that we need more time for math instruction at Baldwin. We've been operating with a schedule with under 40 minutes per period in both fifth and sixth grade for 19 years, and, and we know we struggle to meet those requirements. And then the Borland report happened, and that helped as well, because he pointed out the deficiency in math time. He also pointed out the need to look at how we're going to deal with kids with advanced learning needs. And he also talked about scheduling at Baldwin specifically in that report. So all that came together, and we considered all of that as we developed the schedule. Now, one of the things I told this very brave committee, it was one of my favorite quotes, is that while everyone loves progress, and what we think we're doing is progress, nobody actually likes change, right? So that's something I really had to prep the committee for. As we start to change something that's been in place for 19 years at a school building, even though we know we can do a better job, even though we know, we think what we've going to, what we put together is going to be in the best interest of, interest of kids, we still know that it's going to be tough. So staff buy-in, et cetera, you know. So I warned them upfront, and they still wanted to do it, so we did. So we started out the committee process this way. We asked this question, and it seems pretty simple. We asked this question in the, in the committee, and then I asked it of the full staff in a faculty meeting. What percentage of students grade five and six experience should be devoted to? And then we listed everything we offer right now. And that's an interesting question. If you just take a look at it and think to yourself how you would answer it, you'll probably find what I found. That's, I have 55, roughly 55 certified staff members, and I received about 75 different answers to the question, because everyone has a different opinion about what a five, six middle school experience should look like. And that kind of set the tone, that we're going to look at this from a student point of view. Right now, this is our current schedule, the one that's been in existence for a long, long time. The column on the left shows what we currently do in terms of, that's those subject matters I just listed. Column on the left shows it in percentage. The percentage of time kids spend in literacy over that two-year period. See that 25 at the top? It's 25% of the time. Math, 12.5% of the time. And you can read right down that, that column. The total minutes are in the right-hand chart. One of the things that jumped out at us as a committee and as a staff, one, two, three, four, was the fifth item down, study halls. At Baldwin Middle School currently, students spend 10.4% of their instructional time in study halls over those two years. We knew that was too much. That was a big aha moment for the committee, you know. And what are kids doing in those study halls? If you go back to the earlier slide, I said we wanted to maximize educational opportunities and experiences for kids. Well, we know we had to do something with that time, and we had to be creative with it. Here's an example of a typical current schedule. This is a schedule for an actual student, name's not on there, fifth grade student at Baldwin Middle School right now. You'll notice that outside of language arts, which is the first block across the top, all the other blocks in the schedule are 40 minutes long. You'll also notice that the green-teal color are the related arts, and they're jumbled throughout the schedule. You'll notice study halls, which are in the gray, are peppered throughout the schedule. You'll notice lunch and recess are consistent. Okay, so we have that there. One of the interesting things about our current schedule is, if you look at where world language is, day three and day four, this student has world language at 11:10 on day three, and at 10:28 on day four. And then won't have world language again until the next day three. So consistency of instruction in terms of related arts was also lacking. So these are all the things we noticed as we went through the schedule discovery as a staff. So we took all of that information. We tried to consider it. We grappled with it. We thought about the limitations. We thought about our staffing, and we wanted to develop the proposed schedule. And what we decided to do as a committee, and I think we did this, it's in the best possible way we could, was to take a look at this from a student perspective. What are the students going to get out of their experience at Baldwin? We took the teacher experience away. We took the principal's experience away. We took the paraprofessionals' experience away. We said, what is a student going to get at Baldwin Middle School? And we developed the schedule. So what is, what does this new schedule look like? It's still a six-day cycle. Right now, we run an A-through-F day cycle. It's still an A-through-F day cycle. But we've created a schedule that has consistency, especially for the related arts. The problem you saw on the last slide with world language won't exist in the new schedule. We have instructional blocks for every, every instructional area that average 72 minutes. That's a big increase, over 40 minutes. We have literacy and math instruction daily. Every single day, kids will have literacy and math instruction. We have science and social studies instruction every other day, so that's an alternate. One day, a student would have science. The next day, they'd have social studies. That goes back and forth over that six-day schedule. We maintained our 40-minute lunch and recess blocks at both fifth and sixth grade. We've been able to incorporate a performance music instructional block that meets every other day, and that, again, is 72 minutes long. And we also have incorporated an intervention and enrichment block that runs opposite that music block every other day, which allows kids to get intervention services they need, as well as enrichment. as well as enrichment designed by the teaching team. Now, one of the big changes in the schedule is the teaching teams. The teaching teams, currently, teachers teach more than one subject. I introduced the people on the committee, they teach more than one subject, they teach language arts and something. In the new schedule, every teacher teaches just one subject. There would be a language arts teacher, every student would see, there would be a math teacher, a social studies and a science teacher. So the core academics are taught one subject, one teacher. So what does that look like? That's what, that's what the new schedule would look like. So if you take a look, you still see the six days, one, two, three, four, five, six across the top, and down the left-hand column are the periods. So this student, this is the same student, this would be his schedule, the same student you saw on the last, previous slide. He'd have language arts, period one on day one, social studies, period two on day one. Then he'd have his related arts class, this would be a PE class in this case. Then he'd have his lunch and recess, he'd come back for his third academic, which would be math, and then he would go to the enrichment or intervention block at the end of the day. On day two, the schedule's pretty much the same, just the order of things changes. And you'll notice that social studies is replaced with science. So it's an every-other-day schedule, still over a six-day period. Just for your reference, that's the old schedule. If you just look, one of the things we did as a committee was look at the colors and say, you know, what a nice, clean schedule. Not that that matters, but longer instructional blocks is what matters, and that's what we're showing here. And then we did a comparison of the time, time and percentage of time in classes over the fifth and sixth grade experience. If you look at the left-hand side of this chart, you'll see the current schedule in the white column, and then the proposed, the next column, and then the difference in each subject matter in that third column. You'll notice literacy instruction in terms of minutes is down 4.9%. Math instruction in the schedule is up 7.6%. Science and social studies both see a slight decrease, 2.4%. And study halls, you'll notice, drops to zero. We really wanted to recapture that time and provide good instructional opportunities for kids. So you'll see that drops to zero. And you can see there's some minor adjustments in other areas down across the list. One of the things we'd want to point out as a committee, though, is the decrease in time in science and social studies, why, while that seems to be, you know, we had a lot of questions even from staff, you know, why the decrease in science and social studies' time? Well, right now, a science teacher teaches a science lesson in 40 or less minutes. A science teacher with this schedule, even though it's an every-other-day schedule, would be teaching for about 72 minutes. Well, in 72 minutes, you've got less transition, and you also have opportunities to do some really neat stuff with kids, like experiments and labs, and full labs and experiments. The same thing with social studies, even though it's every other day, there's lots of opportunity for multimedia, there's lots of opportunity for projects and group work. So we don't see that as a, as a net loss of time. We actually see that as, if you take it in aggregate, as probably break even or even gain some, especially in terms of the instruction. So we've rolled this out so far. We had team meetings with every teaching team in the school. We had a meeting opportunity for any teacher in the school with, with the committee to come and ask questions and offer ideas and insight. We had a full faculty meeting to discuss this again. We had question and answers for all faculty and staff. Anyone on the committee knows as much about the schedule as I do, so they could ask at any time. And finally, at the end of May, we kind of, this kind of gelled together, and we had a schedule we think works pretty well. We then shared it with the non-certified staff at a June 6 meeting, to see what they thought about that and to show them what was, what we thought was going to be happening. And we're planning to do a parent night for parents of current fifth grade students, because they're going to see the biggest transition, and then, before the end of the school year, and then information for grade four incoming students over the summer. And of course, you're a part of that as well, that's why we're here tonight. We wanted to give you an update and give you a chance to ask questions about anything we've talked about.
Doug, I couldn't see it as it went by, but has the time in lunch slash recess changed?
Nope. The time for lunch and recess stayed the same. It's, it's been 40 minutes for 19 years, and it's, it's still 40 minutes.
When you have the, the old schedule, there's really no time for transitions, right? So you don't even, aren't even sort of picking up the time you might lose from, or gain from decreasing the number of transitions, right? I would think that that would be
That's correct.
substantial at that age.
Right, that's right.
I'd also note that Doug and I both spent time meeting with GEA and looking at any of these proposed changes and any contractual impact, and making sure that we had GEA buy-in and support, as well as buy-in and support from the local staff at Baldwin. And I'm happy to say that we do. The GEA is enthusiastic about moving forward as well.
How does it get, sorry, how does it get decided who teaches what? I mean, some of it's obvious, but there's since, you know, there's a huge amount of language arts teachers, and they also teach something else, so how is that?
Right, so, so every teacher currently teaches language arts and something else. So quite honestly, the decision is mine. And how do I do that? I've met with every single teacher on the staff for private conversations about what they, how they think they would best serve, I asked two questions. How would you best serve kids at Baldwin Middle School, and what is your teaching passion? Those are two questions I wanted to have a face-to-face conversation with every teacher about, and I've done that. I also have my own observations and ideas about strengths and weaknesses and so forth. So those decisions are, are really going to be made by me.
In any given year, that's the only way to assign teachers into a schedule. Every principal decides what courses each teacher will be teaching in his or her school, grade levels, courses. I think that Doug gave everybody an opportunity to be heard this year before making such big one-time schedule changes.
Does this have impacted the team approach at all? Or does the team approach stay as is, so that a team's still using the same language arts, the same math teacher, the same science teacher?
Okay, it actually becomes kind of a hybrid situation. So right now, we have teams of, of three core teachers.
Right.
Right. No, this won't be that way. They'll actually be, every student will see four different teachers.
Right.
Okay? And the way it ends up working out, if you think of the current team structure, we try not to, we try really hard not to talk about the current string, team structure, but we want, we have to do it for comparison reasons.
Right.
So I'm going to go out and try to explain it. So right now, there's three teachers, right? Next year, there'll be a hallway of six teachers.
Okay.
Okay? Every student on that hallway will see four of them. They'll see that one language arts teacher, one math teacher, and then everyone in that hallway, every student, will see the same social studies and the same science teacher.
So there's still, I mean, one of the things that I think, as a parent, we appreciated was some kind of team. I mean, you're seeing a move from elementary, where you have a, kind of a primary teacher, to kind of a, so that there's still a team approach, it's just a little bit different.
Yes, and the team will still meet together regularly. The team will still plan together regularly, and you, as a parent, will have four teachers who know your kid, not three. So it's a little bit of a change, but it's not a significant shift in philosophy.
One of the things I like to bring up in relation to that, and I, any, any, any of the Baldwin people, we've talked about, I said, we've, we've heard every question we could possibly hear about this schedule, we think. Maybe someone's right, but, so, you know, anyone can speak to this just as well as I can. But one of the big advantages of this schedule, as we see it, is the common planning time or the common prep time that exists. Right now, if you look at that schedule we showed earlier, the current schedule, teachers are all over the place. For, even for, for me to call a team, like Rob McMillan's team, he and John Montanaro happen to be on the same team, if I call that team and I say, hey, I want to meet with you guys, usually one of them's doing something like covering a study hall, and I can't meet with them. And that's a real big problem in terms of leadership of the building and, and consistency and collaboration. This schedule gives every teacher on a team in a hallway, all six, the same 70-plus minute common planning time every single day. Doesn't matter if it's a day, A-Day, B-Day, C-Day, it doesn't matter. I should be able to call up that team and say, I want to meet with you six tomorrow at, during your related arts period, and every teacher's, I know they're available. That does a lot in terms of professional development and collaboration. And, you know, any of, anyone sitting here can feel free to jump in on, or not.
Typically, only two of us are available out of the three, unless it's predetermined. We have one day, A-Day for our team, where all three of us are free at the same time, and we meet with the guidance department. Then we have B-Day, where we meet with our literacy coach or our PLC. And then there's E-Day, where the three of us are free to plan together. And then after that, it's just kind of a hodgepodge, where typically, you can only find two of us who are not in a study hall. And so even for the three of us, our third team member's in here tonight, for us to try to get together on any of the non-predetermined days is difficult. So this does
This seems like an improvement.
Oh, definitely.
Help me out here to, I mean, you've essentially done away with the study halls.
Correct.
And they have transmuted into this intervention and enrichment thing, but I don't think I understand what that means.
Okay, that's a valid question. Actually, I'm going to ask one of the committee members to handle this one. Does anyone want to talk, speak to that? This is something the committee is probably the most excited about as a group, so any, any.
I'm really excited about this. So we've been thinking a lot about what we're going to do. And, and one thing we know right now is that our class time is too valuable, and we can't always meet to intervene with something that a student might be struggling with. There just simply isn't enough time to see everybody. So this time is a focused period of time where we can do intense intervention. Similarly, bleh, can't get the words out. Likewise, I'm excited about the enrichment piece. I feel like this could be something that's really transformative. We can do something amazing in math. We could be doing hands-on projects, exploration-based things. This is something that we couldn't do before because we simply didn't have time. We were just teaching the core curriculum. And now we could bring that beyond the limits that we couldn't before.
So Ted, the six teachers could take their group of students and mix them up and shuffle them in ways that they aren't shuffled or mixed up during the regularly scheduled classes. So you could have a group of students who are going to math for enrichment, for intervention, while there's another group of students who are going to history for enrichment, and you can have multiple things happening. Doug doesn't necessarily schedule the whole school for that block. Six teachers schedule their 80 or 120, 150 students, whatever number they're responsible for. It actually speaks to another recommendation in the Borland report about flexible grouping. The danger in this is you have to make sure that those groups really do reshuffle and remix over the course of the year. You don't want them to become static tracked groups. So it opens up lots of opportunities for teachers to get the kids that they want more time with, maybe for intervention, maybe for enrichment, and they work just among themselves as a team.
You know, if I can add to that, too, the key difference between that time and the existing study hall is right now during the existing, the existing study halls are scattered, right? So you don't have access to the kids necessarily, maybe not even on your team, but certainly not in your hallway. So you may have a, a teacher who's got a study hall, but they can only serve those 20, 25 kids at a time. They don't have access to the rest of the hallway at the same time. And in fact, the other teachers are busy covering a study hall or teaching a different class at that time. So there's no way to do that collaborative work together. I think that's a huge, huge improvement.
How many kids actually did homework during study hall?
I'll defer that to one of the teachers.
On any given day, it depends. A lot of times in the study halls, you have kids that are getting enrichment, or intervention from another teacher, or at a music lesson. So there are very few study halls where I'd have my entire home room. But study halls could be a few kids doing some homework, some kids getting caught up on, on assignment from another class. It's, it varies by, by day. Most of my study halls, at least my students, they're not really working on homework, they're usually using it for long-term projects that would be more difficult to do at home.
Can I ask just a follow-up to that particular question, which is, if I'm recalling correctly, and I may not be, are, are there not a number of kids who don't have study halls as well? I mean, this isn't a loss, a loss of time, and I don't think it's a loss. I think what you're doing is terrific, so bad word choice. But there are kids who just go through Baldwin, never having a study hall, isn't that correct?
No, in fact, what you saw on that board was the minimum number of study halls a student can have at Baldwin Middle School. In fact, the, the 10.4% is a lower number. If a student is a music, performance music with an instrument,
Right.
one of those study halls a week is a lesson.
Right.
So they get one less study hall. Everyone else gets that.
Everybody else would get more than that.
Oh, wow, okay. And for some reason, I was remembering that we had kids that went through never having a study hall in Baldwin, but I'm wrong about that.
Nope.
Okay.
Not that, Mr. Ross may.
No, not at all.
It always seemed strange to me that you would have a nine- or 10-year-old who would play an instrument or sing, having study halls, and then they go to Adams in two years, play an instrument, and have no study halls.
I think the
So that's good, I mean, I think it's better use time.
Yeah, I think the schedule was originally, a lot of it was constructed to allow for some of the instrumental, the ability to get these children out so that they can get some practice time. But it really disjointed the whole schedule. There was no consistency in the schedule. This really allows for consistency, as Doug pointed out, for the teachers to meet, to have parent conferences, for professional development. I mean, that's all along, that's just that one block. Then when you look at the intervention and, and the enrichment block, what happens there is on the opposite day, one, on three days of that week, they're doing the instrumentals. On three of those days, every other day, they're doing chorus. So that allows for that enrichment to happen to those kids during that particular block, enrichment or intervention.
Yeah, question. I like your fortune cookie, and I think this is progress, actually. Are there any teachers that are, you know, very against this, or groups of teachers that are, or have you reached a consensus that this is, you know?
You know, I'd like to think we've reached consensus. We've given so many opportunities for feedback and input. I think we've heard all the, you know, this isn't all milk and honey, I mean, we know that. You know, there are some changes that we're getting questions about, but I think we've been able to answer them. Most of them are around study hall, quite frankly. Most of the questions we get are about kids, kids who currently take instrumental music lessons, who are going to have to, to get that lesson, they're going to have to miss 35 minutes of a class a week. Well, that's really hard to swallow when your class is 40 minutes long. But when your class is 72 minutes long, and you say, well, you know, we're going to gain all this other time back from study halls, but the child has to go take their instrumental music lesson out of one class, which will rotate, so it's not the same class every cycle, for 35 out of 70 minutes, it sounds a lot better. I think that's something we're willing to say, it's better for the whole school for that to happen, rather than to, to have these study halls the way they have been. And I, I think that's the most common thing.
Can I add to that? Because I can see some looks of
No, I'm just a little confused that the kid is missing class to take a lesson.
But then we have that, but they, it would have to be scheduled specifically or strategically so that we then, as teachers, have that child, that group of children for that enrichment intervention time, so we can take part of that 72 minutes to teach or redo that lesson that those kids missed.
So this is
So they're still going to get the instructions, it's just going to be at a different time.
Right, this is an age-old compromise in middle school schedules, where the instructional music teachers would pull students to come for their instructional lessons, and they inevitably would end up missing content class time to be pulled out for that instructional lesson. The Baldwin schedule was actually built so that that would never happen, but you created so much study hall time that you ended up with only 39 minutes of content contact, so that you never had to miss any of the content contact time. So now, this schedule assumes that you will have to pull a child out of class to have those lessons, but it's once a week. The directive to the music teacher is that it has to rotate, so it doesn't hit math every week. It will hit math and then language arts, and then social studies, and then science in a rotating course. And you just added a layer of sophistication I wasn't aware of. On the day that you're pulled out of my, my language arts class, if so, this is the one day a month where I miss you for your music, your music lesson, I have the enrichment block later that same day, so that I can grab you.
You can't work it that the instructional music comes out of the enrichment
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
No, because we did it so that the entire school has fifth and sixth, and every hallway, every academic teacher would have enrichment intervention, while every child can go to music. Or if they're not going into music, they would then stay on the team level.
Right. While one grade, fifth grade might be doing instrumental, sixth grade is doing chorus. So the entire music department is used, is being in use during that timeframe. But if you look at a block of time of 72 minutes, you have to change the way you're teaching in that class period. So you might, you know, do a little warm-up or something, do 30, 35 minutes of an activity, and then maybe another 25 minutes of something else. So, you know, when you think about it that way, in terms of the entire block of time, So, you know, when you think about it that way in terms of the entire block of time, taking someone out for maybe that last thirty minutes to go to an instrumental music is something that they can get caught up with else at another point in time.
I, I, honestly, I predict from you, when you hear from parents, that's gonna be a big deal. That is gonna be a big deal. That, that you're gonna pull my kid out of class for a music lesson.
And I got to, I help, I don't live in Guilford, and my daughter, once a week, misses half hour of social studies instruction.
No, I'm not saying every parent.
Right, no, but I'm just saying.
I'm just saying that I, warning, I would predict, no, I think that's gonna be a big deal.
That's why we're here, sharing with you tonight.
I, I think the big benefit to this is, right now, everybody's out of instructional class time.
Correct.
So if you can have the lesson.
Those instrumental blocks, whereas now only the students that are receiving that are being pulled out instead of everybody. So we do gain a lot of time.
I'm not, I'm not arguing for it against. I'm telling you that there'll be parents who aren't thrilled with that possibility.
We anticipate that. But, and I do think, you know, that was a big aha moment for the committee, quite honestly, was when we realized why there were so many study halls, because we couldn't quite figure it out. Why? You know? The reason is, if you wanna boil it down to its basic fact, is that someone somewhere along the line decided that kids should never, ever be pulled from an academic for a music lesson. So to accomplish that, they pulled every kid from an academic. Even though there might only be eight kids in a lesson, nobody in theory is getting any academics at that time. And when you, when you start to, you know, when you internalize that, you just look at each other with your mouth dropped, saying, for a school of five hundred and fifty kids.
Stop.
Right.
Now, I wanna point out, I wanna make sure we're being clear. The students aren't pulled out for their, for their orchestra class.
No, 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 yeah, I understand. I mean, I had, I had two musicians, so I, we, we had, yes, music lessons.
Yep.
I have a change of topic a little bit. What's the philosophy behind a relatively young student, fifth and sixth grade, not having homeroom, not having a teacher for more than, I mean, now they have this one teacher for two academics. That's, that's changing. Is that a young age for kids to lose that? Will they still maintain a relationship with an adult in the building that they can go to and so on? How does that work?
Yeah, I mean, they'll still go to a homeroom because we'll need to do attendance in Milltown and all that. It will be much shorter than it is now. Right now, we have a time, it's called encore time, the first twenty-two minutes of the day. Encore, I would call a hybrid between a homeroom and a study hall. That time isn't included in anything I showed you, by the way. So it's more instructional time that, that was kind of pulled out. But yeah, they'll absolutely have that relationship. In fact, if you look at minutes, the minutes a student will have contact with a specific teacher will go up in the schedule versus our current schedule because of the forty-minute blocks.
I'd also note, and Doug and I have talked about this quite a bit. The first time a new schedule comes out, it is not my expectation that this schedule will be put in place in Baldwin in September and then won't change for nineteen more years. It is absolutely my expectation that by December, this group or a group like this group will start talking about what's working and not, and what's not working. And, and maybe one of the recognitions would be, there needs to be one special person. And so, yes, the child has four teachers, but is there a way to add one lead teacher, one home base? So there's a special connection to one teacher for one quarter of the team for each of those four. I fully expect that year to year, Doug and his team are going to make adjustments to this schedule. And three years from now, it'll probably look a lot like this, but it'll be a lot better than this, simply because it will become learned and lived and improved through that time. I honestly believe a schedule needs to grow and evolve every year. You, you don't just change it and then wait another twenty years.
And I, Paul, if I can add to that, the stat, I think the Baldwin staff knows that as long as I'm the principal there, we're gonna revisit everything every year. That's, that's kind of what we do. That's part of continuous improvement. I told the committee when we first started, I was the principal at my last school for five years, and the only year I didn't change the schedule, or have a committee change the schedule, was my first year. I don't see any reason for that not to be the case here as well, as we learn and grow, because things change every year. So we're gonna keep doing that. We'll keep our eye on it.
Well, I, I do have to say, just, just even looking at a couple of observations. One, particularly, I think with this age group, having less transition time probably saves you more than the, the three minutes of passing. I can't, right? I mean, I can't even imagine.
How many times does Bill say?
Right, right, right.
Four or five minutes, I need to.
But I, I mean, I just, this looks like a really terrific improvement in, in, in just longer blocks of time, and it just looks more sane. The, the other schedule looks a little chaotic and crazy.
Almost chaotic, but when you looked at that up there with so many changes, this with the blocks looks so much more compacted and for the kids, too, they're, they're not moving and changing so often.
And as Doug pointed out, you know, for the related arts, there's a consistency that might be on A day and D day, you know, where before that might meet two days in a row and then not meet for four days. So there's the consistency of instruction for the children. That's also.
Well, and as I recall the way this, this schedule works, I mean, sometimes that could be two weekends in, in a week. If all you need is one holiday, and if you have that schedule that you have your world language two days in a row, you might not have it for, for a week and a half again.
That's right.
That's exactly right.
Sorry to belabor this. I had had two or three kids go through with the music, so I should know this better. But, so for the, these music lessons, what percentage of kids get pulled out to do those? Is it?
Oh, boy.
Like fifty, twenty-five, seventy-five?
I'd say they're probably like sixty percent of the kids in the building.
And so they do how much instructional time a week?
Do they get for instrumental?
Yeah.
Well, every, every lesson.
For the lesson?
Yeah, if you're pulling them out of a.
How much will they miss?
We haven't really, that hasn't really been determined, but we're sus, we suspect it probably thirty to thirty-five minutes during one of the blocks is probably the amount of time that, you know.
And why can't that time come out of the intervention enrichment period?
And again, because both, all the music is done at the same time, where the fifth grade does chorus, the sixth grade might be doing orchestra and band. And on the next day, as it rotates through, the one that's doing, that's now the sixth grade is doing chorus, and the fifth grade is doing orchestra and band. So.
So the band, music teachers aren't available.
The teacher's not available.
Just logistics. We'd have to double the music staff to be able to make it work that way.
Exactly.
Which Doug would be happy to do.
I can tell you, the committee that put, that worked on this schedule, we spent hours and hours and hours with every possible variation we could come up with, you know, to make times fit, to make schedules fit. And this was what we think is the best we could come up with. And, and Chris, I think your, your question's a really good one. You know, why can't it come out of that time? And the basic answer is the, the music staff is tied up teaching their big music at that time and through the whole school. That was one way. Right now, we actually have two blocks in our current schedule, fifth and ninth, that big music is doing their, their music lessons. We're really pushing that all into one block and doing it every other day type of thing.
I know Jan Shames was on the committee, but I don't see any chorus on here. But there must be someplace where chorus is.
That's a sample, right?
That's a sample, yeah. He's there.
Okay.
See what says instrumental?
Or band, yeah.
Or B, see what says band? Well, that's actually band and orchestra are sharing that block, calling students, okay?
Right.
While that's in fifth grade, while sixth grade, all those kids are going to chorus.
Right.
On the exact same time.
Okay, on the next day, they would all be.
And then they all rotate through. Okay.
Can, can you just explain how you're gonna do the enrichment, make, whatever you would call it, makeup or additional work during the enrichment period for the children who are pulled out of a class for a music lesson? Who's gonna implement that and make sure it happens? Because that strikes me as there, there is a risk of an administrative burden or, or on the teachers.
Well, I think it comes, it comes to the communication in the hallway. Once we get, once we live the schedule a little bit, I'll get a sense of who I'm going to be missing on a particular day, and I can communicate to the staff in the hallway and say, listen, I'm missing these five kids. They went to a band lesson. I need to see them for twenty-five minutes of the, of the enrichment period. We just have to coordinate that amongst ourselves to make sure that we're getting to the kids we need to see that missed part of a lesson.
I wanna be, I wanna be careful about how I phrase this, but other communities, and Anne started to mention this, in, in many of the other schools, part of that responsibility, and I believe Borland spoke to this, part of that responsibility needs to shift to the student. And so part of it is the responsibility to say, you are doing the extra performing group. And it starts to become your responsibility as a student to make sure that if you miss Mr. Montanaro's class today, that you go out of your way to touch base now. We're gonna take an educational approach to that. We're gonna help to grow that responsibility. We're not gonna say the responsibility starts and ends with the student, and if you don't follow up, we're going to ping you for it. But it's about growing that responsibility. It's about communication, not just among the teachers, but between those students and their teachers as well. We want students, as they continue to go through the high school level, who advocate for themselves and help to fill their schedule when they've got so much that things begin to compete.
So I have a follow-up question to that, which is, is, is it not that there's a requirement to be in a performance music in fifth grade? So you're actually not giving kids choices? Everyone is in this boat?
Everyone is in a performance music in fifth grade.
So everyone's getting pulled out at some point?
As it has been for nineteen years.
Oh, except for chorus, right, right. I guess perhaps a pop to Bill's question, maybe Bill's not done, but, but the, it sounds like, given teacher, it sounds a little chaotic. Like, I'm making, I'm, I'm, yeah, no, no. So today I have five kids who miss this period math and another two who miss this one, and I'm charge of enrichment that day. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out.
It's, it's gonna take us time. It's not gonna be the first day of school. We're not gonna have.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not expecting that. I'm just, I'm just wondering what the thought is, because it sounds like the enrichment can get lost in makeup work, quite frankly, in makeup teaching. Or the, or the intervention could get lost in makeup teaching.
But that's one day out of six.
But not that, that, for that one kid, but the teacher is gonna have missing every day. So it's not one day for the teacher. And the teacher's the one who's gonna guide what happens in that last period.
And I, and I think we have to be very, what word is, again, I guess strategic again, and that we have to make sure that we're following, you know, we might split that last block and say, okay, you know, thirty-five minutes is gonna go for reteaching. This kid, there's gonna be a child who needs intervention for math, language arts. How are we gonna get them to do that? And get, you know, those needs, so they can might go here or there. And it's gonna be very hard work as teachers.
That's what I'm thinking, I guess.
But.
But worth it for the kids.
Teachers are gonna do that. That's what you do for your students.
And I'm smiling because this is the other conversation that Doug and I have been having. In schools that do this, that implement it poorly, that period simply becomes a study hall anyway. So it has a different name.
Right, that's exactly right.
But it becomes a default end-of-the-day study hall that becomes a catch-all. And it really falls to the teachers working thoughtfully with it and administrative supervision, administrators knowing that you're not just chunking them out into six small groups and they stay static all year long. There really is a reason for moving the kids, and there's really good work that gets done. When it is implemented well, it becomes something that teachers are excited about, because that's my time of day where I can be flexible. And yes, I've still got fifteen things to do in that time. But it's my group of kids and my partners, and I can control it compared to, I've got fifteen, well, fourteen things to get, to get done, but it's a study hall and my kids are spread all over the building, sort of to the four winds. And so it can be an improvement when it's implemented well. When implemented poorly, it can be all of the concerns that you guys are raising right now. But there's nothing that you can design so well that it doesn't have the danger of poor implementation.
I think the other important thing is that really that block is intervention, enrichment, and substitution for those kids that are pulled out, we're catching them up. I'm concerned, and the whole Borland report was because intervention is clear. That's driven by an IEP, and students are struggling, and they need intervention. That, that's to be clear. Substitution, when a child is pulled out for music and you need to replace what's missing, I get that. I'm concerned about the enrichment piece, because we need resources, we need skills, we need to put emphasis on that for those high-potential learners that are not getting in fifth, sixth grade what they really need. So I applaud the idea that we're gonna identify them, but now we need to work on how are we going to enrich?
And enrichment really is for any student. I mean, the student who does need intervention at times also is gonna need enrichment at times. So it really is an intervention period for every student, whether you're pushing them because they need to be intervened to push themselves and challenge themselves, or they need to be, have, receive intervention because they need solidification of skills.
But you're right, Dr. Myers. We're better practiced and better resourced for intervention than we are for, for enrichment, and we know that. And Doug's gonna have to continue to provide resources and support. We now have a math coach who will be in the building, who will be able to work with the sixth grade at least. How do you do the intervention? How do you, how do you coach at that level? We've got bridges at the fifth grade, which provides more materials and not to be missed. We're also pushing to differentiate better. It is hard to differentiate in fewer than forty minutes. The teachers will be able to differentiate better on a day-to-day basis when you've got seventy-two minutes in which to do that. That's not to discount your point. You're absolutely right. But I don't wanna lose that seventy-two minutes will provide greater differentiation through the day than what we've been able to provide before at Baldwin.
I think you have teachers also at Baldwin who want to make it work. I mean, there's, you know, vast majority of that, you know, you're gonna get the one or two that just wanna throw, but I think vast majority, we want it to work, and we, that's what we want the time to have, because we can't offer that now. And that's frustrating as an educator.
And that's the difference between letting a committee and a staff draw the schedule, rather than having Doug go home for a long weekend and come back on Tuesday and say, guys, this is what we're gonna do next year. There's a different level of investment.
I just wanna ask one question about, that I'm sure we're gonna get, relating to the pullout for the music instruction. Why is that educationally important for us to be doing as a district at all?
You mean?
Why not have the instrumental lessons happen after school?
Why not, why not something else? Why, why, why is that model the right model?
Well, I have my one-year answer. Okay? So I've been here a little less than a year. And one of the things I put on one of the top first slides was community value. And I can tell you that at Baldwin, the performance music is valued incredibly by the community. And I mean the Guilford community, right? Plus the staff. What those kids are able to do in chorus and orchestra and band blows everybody away, quite frankly. Whenever, my, my first concert, I couldn't believe what the kids were able to produce. And some of that, I think, has to do with the level of instruction they get from some very, very, very talented music educators at, at the school. So why is that important? I think it's, it's a community question. And for me, it was something that I wanted to protect, quite frankly. I mean, I think there is some, you know, there is some struggle sometimes between music and, and the core academic subjects on some level. But I don't see that as, it does not have to be a opposing force. They can work together, and I think this is a great, a great way to accomplish that. But, you know, that's my less than a year there answer. There might be another one.
I'll point out that that's a very wise and politic, less-than-a-year answer for a principal to give. That's a big question, and that question would take more than, than a year to change in a schedule. There's a community value. When I was less than a year here, I had a meeting in someone's living room with a group of, of the music community in Guilford and wanted to know how much I was going to invest in musical instruction and the importance of it here. I, I think that Doug has shaped with, with input, has shaped a compromise. And a schedule is just a series of compromises. There's no schedule that's going to meet everybody's needs and make everybody happy. I think that's a wise compromise that I expect the team will watch over the next year or two and come back with refinements and maybe more bold suggestions in the future.
I'm sure Nick Ferriani traces his, his success back to Baldwin.
Nick didn't actually attend.
No.
He came in later than that. Yeah, he entered in ninth grade. But, I mean, it was an example of the value that this community places on, on music. I mean, that's, that's a deeply held value.
And, and I mean, look, we've talked about music a lot, you know, over the last, you know, some number of years, and there, the, the concept that core curriculum education and music education are unrelated, I think most people would say that that's just not the case. That there are values in mathematics, for example, there are values in language arts, there's, there, so, I mean, we, I, you know, we, we tend to compartmentalize in education, and that's not always maybe the best approach. But I think Dr. Alice Tracy's right. There, there are gonna be questions about this. And, and, because you are making a valued judgment effectively. And, you know, I, I, but there are more minutes. So, I mean, yeah, okay.
Well, I, you know, I guess, maybe it will be the last word on this for tonight, maybe not. But I, I do think that, you know, when you look at the current schedule, if that's the option, it, it's not a very good option, because even the enrichment intervention block, done as poorly as we could do it, is going to be better or equal to what we are currently doing, because we currently don't have kids in any systemic way in a spot to receive any kind of intervention or, or enrichment during those study hall periods. It's just lost opportunity. So, you know.
Yeah, and look, this is one of these areas. We, every time we look at something like this, we, it is really tempting that when, if you cannot come up with a perfect schedule, it's tempting to say, oh, we can't do anything.
Right.
And, I mean, who's it, the? And, I mean, who's it, the, don't let the-
Let the perfect be the enemy of the good.
Yeah, yeah, or the better in this circumstance. So, okay, we're just going to have to keep an eye on it.
Yeah.
And it's going to, I, I'm, I'm concerned that it's going to take a lot of work by teachers. But if the teachers want to do it, that's terrific.
Well, I think one of the things that the schedule also affords them is more time to work together in smaller groups. And I think that will create the opportunity for them to do more of the enrichment, you know, and intervention. The intervention sort of comes along as it needs, right? The longer periods.
You know, we've talked, when we were talking about the high school schedule, the data on longer periods is pretty-